And to the Republic, which stands by nation, under God, indivisible, and every entity of all.
Roll call, Katie.
All Commissioners are present.
Are there any amendments to the agenda? Here are none, can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? We have an agenda, all right. There's no changes to the minutes from the seventh, September nineteenth, public hearing and regular meeting? Can I get a motion to accept those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
You got a first and a second to approve the minutes? All in favor? Motion carries. This brings us to presentations. Let's start off with a showcase.
Could we, could we start off with the proclamations? We're waiting on someone else, I believe, to arrive.
Sure.
Okay. All right. The first proclamation we have tonight is to recognize the month of October as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, whereas Camden County recognizes the vital role technology has in our daily lives and in the future of our nation, whereby today many critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems, whereas internet users, citizens, and our information infrastructure face an increasing threat of malicious cyber attacks, significant financial and personal privacy losses due to identity theft and fraud. Whereas 2023 marks the twentieth Cybersecurity Awareness Month campaign, and the National Cybersecurity Alliance and the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency are celebrating with a year-round awareness campaign, Secure Our World. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Camden County Board of Commissioners that October 2023 is Cybersecurity Awareness Month in Camden County, and all citizens are encouraged to learn about and practice cybersecurity in their homes, schools, workplaces, and businesses. And I believe we have two individuals here from our IT department that would like to get a picture for Claire. Other than one people.
I would like to say that the best way to celebrate Cybersecurity Awareness Month is to update your devices. Thank you.
We got another presentation, Katie?
Yes, we have two more. Next is a proclamation recognizing the week of October eighth through the fourteenth, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week, whereas Camden County is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at great, the greatest risk from fire. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will, will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in a reported home fire almost in half. Whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. And now therefore be it proclaimed, the Camden County Board of Commissioners to hereby proclaim October eighth through the fourteenth as Fire Prevention Week throughout this county, and urge all, all people of Camden County to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week, and to support the public safety activities and efforts of Camden County Fire Rescue. And we do have a few people here that would like to come up and do what else they want. All right, and we have one more presentation. We have a proclamation recognizing the month of October as American Archives Month, whereas Camden County is rich in history, as it was among the first areas of Georgia to experience European colonization by both the Spanish and English. Camden County was one of Georgia's eight original counties, whereas the Bryan Lang Archives was established in 1987 as a depository for books, documents, maps, photographs, and other records of historical and genealogical value pertaining to Camden County. The material is non-circulating but is available for research in the archive. The Bryan Lang Archives is a research-only facility providing basic and advanced searches for information pertaining to Camden County. Whereas the entire private collection of books and records belonging to the late Beatrice Beebe Lang, a Camden County native, is in the archives. The Bryan Lang Archives is named in memory of Ms. Lang and Mary Givens Bryan, her longtime friend and former director of the Georgia State Archives from 1951 to 1964. And whereas patrons may utilize the Bryan Lang Archives Monday through Friday from nine AM until four thirty PM, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Camden County Board of Commissioners that October 2023 is American Archives Month in Camden County, and all citizens are encouraged to learn about the rich treasures available in our local archives. And Ms. Melinda is here from the archives. You don't have to get up again. And are, are we ready for the photo contest? Okay. We're ready for the.
All right, this brings us to your recognition showcase of Camden County photo contest recipients.
I'm here tonight to announce the winners of the 2023 Showcase Camden County Photo Contest. This year, we received thirty entries from fifteen applicants, and they were submitted in the following categories: landscape, nature, wildlife, sunrise, sunset, and transportation. For a blind judging process, a winning photograph was chosen from each category along with an overall winner. The winners are here with us tonight, and we will start by recognizing the winner of each category and then, then the overall winner. As I call your name, contestants, please come forward, and I will give you your certificate, and we will go ahead and congratulate you on your winning. The winner of the category for transportation is Fleets N., taken by Patrick Betchik. You stay right there, and turn around if you want. You can turn around, so she can take your picture. He's not. The winner for the category of Sunrise Sunset is Sunset on the Marsh, taken by Terry King. Oh, Patrick, can I get you to stay up there? Please, thank you. And the winner for the category of nature, wildlife, which I'm not sure she made it, is Hawk Over Cumberland, and that's Ashley Alexander. Oh, she's here. And the winner of the category of landscape is Beautiful Cloud Reflection, which was also taken by Terry King in the middle. And our overall winner was also Sunset on Marsh, taken by Terry King. And I would like to thank you guys for participating, and all of the other participants in the competition, and also our judges that judge the photographs, and we just appreciate you just being involved with it. Thank you again. Another round. Amendment, take a picture with the Commissioners.
Hey, Katie, are you sure?
All right, this brings us to a presentation regarding Camden County Public Works and Fleet Services Site Plan.
There we go. Hi, good evening Commissioners. We're here to give an update on our Fleet Public Works facility site plan and architectural drawings. So we've been working with IPG for the last several months, and we'd like to get, share these site plans, to get any feedback or ideas that you guys have as far as what you guys would like to see or have questions about moving forward. So this is a blown-out version, the first one that you guys see here, just of where the site is behind the facilities building there, intersecting the Godly Avenue and 110. Site's already been cleared, and we're getting ready next week to start stump removal, and we'll be getting the, the top graphical survey and geotech survey done here shortly as well. As we move forward. I've zoomed in. No, you're good. We'll get it all the way down to the third one. Now you can zoom out. There we go. Perfect. Little bit zoomed in on, on each one of these. So as you go through, you've got your public parking, and you, each one of you have, have it up, up there closer, good, so you guys can see it a little bit better as well. And your, your public can pick up parking off to the front of the, the shop there, so the, the public will be able to come in on the, on the main road off of 110 and park in front of the, the public works side of the building, which is the opposite side of the building. And then on the right-hand side would be the entrance for the public, on the left-hand side would be the entrance for the, the staff. The back of the shop there is all of the pull-through bays and the fleet side. From the back of the building, you've got your, your fleet parking in the back, your aggregate storage, your fuel pump location for the, the new fuel pumps going in, and then all of your, your lay-down area up on that way. And then on the bottom is where all your, your bulk aggregate and your.
Stored dirt.
Stored dirt, yeah, that's what we'll call it. Your mountain of dirt will be moved to. This entire facility will be fenced, that's the red line fencing around the, the entire perimeter, and then we'll be using a gated access to the two entrances, one specifically for the fueling station, so if after hours for all of the fire EMS and sheriff's deputies that need to get in after hours, we'll have an entrance there, and then the, the main entrance for the public works building itself. Between the public works, the, the front of the building and the back of the building, there's also a smaller fence or shrub line there that will separate the public-facing side of, of the building with the operation side of the building in the back. Any questions about the, the basic layout of where we're at? I like it. The next page is your, your basic elevations and what the, the front side and the side views will look like. We've got three large pull-in bays, this is for all of your large trucks, tanker trucks, fire EMS, your motor graders, your lowboy, and then you've got two smaller bays for all the vehicles themselves. I think both of those small bays you can fit, if you needed to, up to four vehicles in, eight vehicles in, going across, and so you can fit quite a number of, of vehicles in there. We also were thinking of natural disasters, being able to house your motor graders, your lowboys, any vital equipment inside this building, that way it's sheltered from the, the wind and the storms, and you can fit almost all the fleet inside this building at, at the current moment. This building's also built so that if future expansion is needed on the fleet side, there is room to expand back on the site plan and add another bay or two as we need to, moving forward here in the next ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. Your next slides are the basic floor plan and layout of the building itself. You've got the, the, moving from right to left, the small bays, you've got a tool storage area and your bulk oil storage area inside and outside, and a, an area for all of your, your tires and all your, your product on hand. You got your three large bays for all your large vehicles pull through, and then your office space. Each one of the directors, the fleet, fleet manager and the public works director have their offices in there. You have a nice reception area in the front as you walk in from the, from the parking lot. There's a large training room for fleet public works to do their training in, as, as well as a break room, and ample bathroom facilities for each one of the, both the public-facing and the, the shop-facing facilities. Also added a large plat room and file storage, which is one of the things that we're, we're vitally missing at the moment, is, is a room to pull out your large plats and your, your files and a way to look at them. And so we, we added that in this building as well, so we have ample storage moving forward as well. This timeline, you can blow this up for me, Scott. Timeline, moving forward from here is tonight, getting this in front of you guys, doing the design development approval, and just really getting any questions from anybody that they have on, on how we're moving forward with this. We'll be having the geotechnical and topographical surveys requested here within the next day or two. We expect sixty-five percent designs submitted by the end of October, early November, with our construction documents ready to go to permitting by the end of November. We try to give City of Kingsland, or City of Woodbine in the county about six weeks to look over those documents, make sure everything's good with them, and then we'll put out the bid sometime in January with a construction start date goal of February, maybe early March, and occupancy, and I think this is pretty aggressive, looking for November, December for occupancy by public works. I think we can probably start with that, but we won't be fully occupied probably until early 2025. Barring any questions, that's all we have.
Yeah, brought it from the board. Any questions for him?
No, just complimented it, looks great. Been a long time coming.
Shalaya says yes it has. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
If I can, I just want to take a quick moment and give you an update on pavement preservation, so that began about two weeks ago. As of today, Spring Bluff was completed, and they started and finished Piney Bluff. Tomorrow, they will be in the Colesburg subdivision to complete that, and then they will move on to Harriet's Bluff and complete that, and then they will complete Gap Swamp. So at this point, the only portions of our project that has started and been completed is Piney Bluff Road and Spring Bluff Road. Those two roads are a hundred percent complete at this time.
And the residents of Spring Bluff Road are extremely happy.
Very good.
Said, "Thank you."
Glad to hear it. All right, thank you. Is there any questions regarding, while I'm here? Okay, thank you.
This brings us to the first public comment section of the night, that'd be limited to three minutes and agenda items on them. Are there any registered speakers, Katie?
Yes, first is Mr. Ricky Manning.
Good evening, gentlemen. Rick Manning from Bullhead. I just wanted to address real quick. Again, here we are with budget amendments. This is a never-ending battle here with budget amendments. When are we gonna start holding department heads, administration, and whoever else gets our budgeted funds from our tax dollars liable and accountable for what they spend? It's like a kid in a candy store. If they overrun their budget, they're up here and you amend it, and you hand them some more money. That ain't the way things work, folks. Never have with me. I'd been fired a long time ago, back in my working days. If I overrun my budget, I had to find somewhere to cut the budget. I didn't get to go ask for more money, because it's a handout and free. It don't work that way. We could be cutting taxes if we didn't keep handing money out. If you're not responsible for your budget, hold them accountable, or hire somebody that will be accountable. It's, it's pretty simple. I mean, this government's no different than a business, except you're using the people's money. Let's use it wisely. We can't keep handing it out. You didn't do that with your kids when you raised them. You give them an allowance, and you carry them to the store, and daddy, seeing how y'all men, daddy, I, I bought this, but you only gave me five dollars for my allowance, but it's seven. Well, go ahead and get it. Well, after two or three times of that, next time you go to the store, they're not gonna have no allowance, they're not spending it on candy out down the store when they got off the school bus, because daddy's gonna hand them some more. And that's exactly what's happening here with our county and our budget. Let's get a hold of this thing, folks. I mean, I don't know about y'all, but some of y'all might want to get re-elected, and then we, we looking at things like this. You know, I hold nobody accountable. Just every time somebody comes up here, it's a, like a rubber stamp. Oh, well, we overrun our budget. Well, let's, let's make it look good for everybody, and let's amend it. And wow, you didn't overrun your budget, we just gave you some more money. It don't work like that, y'all. And it, it's got to change. Somebody's got to change it, and the five of you sitting up there are in charge of changing it. We voted for you to, to hold them accountable, and you're not doing it. Thank you.
Anybody else register, Katie?
Yes, sir. Hold on a second.
Hold on one second. Mr. Ralph? Second one, okay. That's all I have for the first public comments, but I do have some for the second.
Okay. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? All right, this time we need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, convene the first public hearing. Or a public hearing.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries to go into public hearing. Joe, are you ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, commissioners. The first item up, we request a rezone 0.36 acres from agricultural residential to single family residential. This parcel carries a future land use of multifamily. It's located in District One at 85 Daisy Way in Woodbine. As you can see here from the aerial with the parcel highlighted in blue, the Daisy Avenue is a connector road between Kenlaw Road and Highway 17. I would like to notate on this as well that the existing single family residence that is located on this parcel, the applicant intends to demolish it with the intention to build a new one. So that is the reason we's asking for the rezone for the setbacks. Can you go back one for me? This is the aerial view of the surrounding zonings. You can see it's kind of a mixed zoning in that area with with that R1 adjacent or right behind this parcel. As I stated before, the applicant is asking for this rezone and order to build a single family residence. And with the size of this parcel being 0.36 acres and zone agricultural residential, it would fall into the category of a nonconforming parcel. However, with the existing parcel having a septic system and a well, we would actually be improving the situation by considering a rezone, rezone with this being 0.36 acres. I did ask the help department to look at this and they do approve of the rezoning because of the existing septic tank and well. And the planning commission recommends approval also.
Okay, is anybody from the public wish to speak in favor of this side? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? All right, we'll move on to the next item, Joe.
The next item is a request to rezone 5.3 acres from agricultural forestry to single family residential. This parcel carries a future land use of rural residential. It is located in District One on Highway 110 in Woodbine. This is aerial view with the parcel highlighted in blue again. There's a couple of parcels down from the intersection of Old Jefferson Highway and Highway 110. This is aerial view of the existing zonings that surround this parcel. The applicant is requesting this rezone with the intention of dividing it up for for family use. I believe they have two daughters that they want to divide this family up for future. So planning commission recommends approval of this.
Is anybody from the public wish to speak in favor of this side? Anybody opposed? We'll move on to the next item.
The next item is a proposed amendment to allow automatic changeable copy sign to be incorporated into or be used as a billboard in the unincorporated county. Now, the definition of a changeable copy sign as it currently sits is a sign on which the signed copy changes automatically on a lamp or LED bank such as electronic message board or electronic time or temperature units through mechanical means. Now, this would be an example of it's actually a dual example. The bottom half of this sign would be considered a manual changeable sign with the top half of the welcome welcoming part being considered an automatic changeable sign. And we're all aware of this sign. This is actually what we consider a digital billboard. This is the billboard located Highway 40 and the interchange of Highway 95, I mean Interstate 95. I would like to state that as our existing ordinance sits, we do have regulations in place to regulate these types of signs already as well as state law that regulates these as far as dimming, distances apart and things of that nature. So as section 708 F3G states currently, it says an automatic changeable copy sign is allowed is not allowed to be incorporated into or be used as a billboard. I would simply like to remove the word not to allow these types of signs to be incorporated into the as billboards. So planning commission will recommend approval on this amendment.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak in favor of this? Ricky, can you come up to the microphone, please?
I mean, I have no problem with it, but is it on a case by case basis of where these billboards would be, you're not going to or is it by the state law that you're not going to be able to stack them right on top of each other and all these LED lights going off as people riding by trying to read and you're going to create traffic hazard?
Yeah, that's a good question. There are currently laws in place as well as ordinances that state the distances apart as well as the brightness on these signs. As you noticed, the one on Highway 40, I might add that it's it's not bright at all as far as if you compare it to the gas station to the right, the gas station lights to the right are actually brighter than those signs.
As long as they're regulated.
They're definitely regulated for sure.
Thank you, Dan.
That that was actually one of my questions in the sense that there's a monitor on there so you have a different light in the day and a different night light at night. Am I correct?
You are correct. And Kevin is actually here tonight representing technical questions, but I believe there's optical lens that are placed that is placed on these signs as far as the brightness goes.
It's 500 feet.
500 is exactly right. Yes, sir.
Kevin, can you come up to the microphone, please?
Yes.
My way is recorder for the record.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Let me just find this email. So to address your concerns about brightness, brightness on today's LED signs is automatically adjusted according to ambient light conditions. The perceived brightness of an LED sign is dependent on a variety of factors. Ambient light conditions play the largest role in affecting the brightness of the display. An LED sign communicates its message emitting light. If therefore, it therefore must not be too dim since it couldn't be distinguished in sunlight, nor should it be too bright as the image will be distorted and difficult to read. The sign must adjust its brightness over the course of the day. Today's signs can dim from 100% during the bright sunny afternoon to around 3 to 6% depending on the manufacturer and model during the darkest of the night. That means the sign is only 3 to 6% as bright at night as during the daytime. During the course of the day, the sign will periodically adjust its brightness levels to ensure it is operating appropriately based on overcast days, you know, or bright sunny days. This particular manufacturer that's this this is quoted from Daktronics comes equipped with a light sensor which detects the ambient light level and adjusts the sign's brightness accordingly. So it senses lights. Now, is it going to respond to a headlight that flashes across it and makes it brighter immediately? No, it doesn't work that way. It it it's it takes a few moments for it to respond. It doesn't come up automatically right away and do that. Some other important things I'd like to point out additionally, the Outdoor Advertising Association of America has commissioned Dr. Ian Lewin, former president of International Engineering Society of North America to develop a brightness standard for digital displays. As a result of his research, the recommended standards suggest that LED signs shall not exceed 0.3 foot candles above ambient lighting conditions. Foot candles is how light is measured. Daktronics digital billboards are equipped with equipped to comply with this lighting standard, although it is important to note that Daktronics signs have the ability to be dimmed to a lower level in order to meet community needs or local regulation. Finally, it is also important to note that the goal of the automatic dimming technology on the LED sign is for the sign to appear appropriately lit in a variety of ambient light conditions and to have a similar brightness appearance of other appropriately lit non-LED signs.
Thank you, Jim.
I think what we're trying to do is is match what Kingsland is already doing. But anybody else wish to speak on this subject? Well, if you want, if if y'all want to sit together and and talk, that's fine. Well, come up to the microphone, please.
So I'm a newbie in this area, but I've spent most of my last few years in Atlanta, in Athens and so forth. When these signs fail, they are so bright and they'll be like that for two or three days. My only concern about these new technology, can we control them off hours? Is if there's a failure and this thing is lighting up the state of New York as a, you know, a beacon, is there a way for you or anybody else to be called to say, hey, you need to manually turn this down so we're not blinded at night for three nights or four nights? That's my biggest concern about these signs is I see them fail all the time. That's my biggest concern.
Sir, would you state your name for the public?
Michael Ralph.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Mr. Great question. It's dependent on the manufacturer as to how these how these signs respond.
To the microphone, please.
You're not. Get closer to the microphone, Kevin. You're not.
Okay, okay, sir, sorry. So forgive me. Great question. When it's dependent on the manufacturer of the of the products, there's a couple of very good products that in my field of expertise that I associate with, and they are responsive to the question, the concern that you have. I think that that's something that is we need to confirm and and work with the municipality to make sure that it's in the code written a specific way to control that.
That's that's my only concern.
Well, in worst case scenario, you can always just cut power to it.
Correct. Yes, you can.
Question, please. Mr. Yakabachi, I realize that this entire billboard situation is a private enterprise and I will be the last person to say that we need to interfere in that or even participate in it. But I wonder, since that is such a wonderful way to put up a changeable message and we in fact have purchased portable signs by the EOC to to accomplish that purpose, have we asked, could we establish a mutual aid agreement with these companies so that we could ask them in emergency situations to put up a message? For instance, evacuation information, that sort of thing as a part of our code? Can we do that?
Yes, sir. I will tell you that everyone that I have met with concerning these signs, each and every one of them has stated that they would allow us to use these sign in emergency situations. And if I'm not mistaken, the ones that are currently in use, the base is actually used, am I speaking correctly about that, Cam? The base is actually used to congratulate individuals or whatever it may be. But yes, you are correct. That has been, I spoke about several times.
So to take that a step further, that's what I try to encourage all of our on premise signs when we sell to a business in the in the community is to participate in in local things of that nature. It was my understanding 20 years ago about, and maybe you can help me remember. We put a sign up at the sheriff's office. It was a it was a the substation and they could program it from Woodbine. They could program it from the substation down there. Today's technology allows you to do a lot more than that. But I was told that Sheriff Proctor's daughter was was attempted to be abducted here in Woodbine. She was approached by someone and she ran, she screamed, she hollered, got away. And they put it on the board down there. Somebody, a passerby, read the message, passing by with a BOLO of the vehicle, got to 95, saw the vehicle, called 911, here's your guy. And they were able to apprehend him.
Outstanding.
So that's a that's a big plus. Amber alerts, you know, silver alerts, you know, whatever that may be. I try to encourage them to put dignitaries when they're coming to town. You know, we we're gracious enough to have a a military base here where there's a lot of prominent people come to town and we want to, we want to make sure we welcome them and give them a nice warm welcome. Unfortunately, and and on a sad note, we've also been able to utilize these signs to show our remorse for lost people and, you know, important people in our community. We always try to encourage everybody to participate in that. So and that shows up, you know, in in the news, it shows up on Facebook if that's a good thing, but it shows our community coming together and and being a strong, great community that we are.
I applaud that. We did notice that the late Deputy David Mills was posted in in most of the electronic signs, if not all of them that I saw, and that we appreciate that very much. And if you had a hand in encouraging that, thank you very much, sir.
You're very welcome. It's my honor to always serve our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. All right, this time we need to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and convene public hearings.
Okay.
Okay.
We need to adjourn the public hearing.
What I said, only backwards.
Second. All in favor?
I'll use my other hand. Sorry about that.
Oh, we're back in the regular meeting. Ready, Joey?
Yes, sir. The first item up would be a request to rezone 0.36 acres from agricultural residential to single family residential. This parcel is located in District One at 85 Daisy Way in Woodbine. Planning commission will recommend approval.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
The first and the second to approve this rezoning, all in favor? Motion carries. Item number two.
Item number two is a request to rezone 5.43 acres from agricultural forestry to single family residential. This parcel is located in District One on Highway 110 in Woodbine. Planning commission will recommend approval.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
First and the second to approve this rezoning, all in favor? Motion carries. All right, this brings us to item number three, the billboards.
Next item up be a proposed ordinance amendment to be amendment to allow automatic changeable copy signs to be incorporated into or be used as a billboard in the unincorporated county. Planning commission will recommend approval.
Motion on the side?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The first and the second to approve the changes for the billboards, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, Chris, you're up.
Can you get a little closer?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, just for me being here today is to request the Board of Commissioners to approve the purchase of two generators for the one for the special ops building, Highway 17, and one for the patrol building, Woodbine. The funding is, funding for this project was approved physical year 2024 capital expenditures in the amount of 49,620. Quotes were obtained from three vendors, Elite Energy Systems, DBA, and Anderson Power Systems bid was the lowest. We propose, there's option one and option two. Option one is to purchase the LP tank or tanks and option two is to lease the tanks.
Purchase. Okay. You can buy from anybody if you purchase on your own tank. If you lease it, you can only buy from that one business. Prices do fluctuate.
All right, can we get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Which option?
Option one. Behind the tanks.
Okay.
Okay.
Purchase, right?
Purchase, right?
Purchase, outright purchase. Second motion.
First and second to buy the generators and purchase the two propane tanks.
So that we can purchase fuel from any vendor, correct?
Correct.
As long as you own the tank, but if you lease it, you're obligated to buy only from them.
That's a good reason to buy the tanks.
If, you know, I guess if we're going to purchase from any vendor, would we secure like an automatic refill with that particular vendor so they don't run out or?
You can. Most of the time you don't use it unless the generator runs, you know that?
Right.
But there again, you can also have it to where they can automatically fill, or you can go out and look at the prices. Prices are easy to find just like that, so. I have the system, I have generators, I have the tanks, I own my own tanks, and I can buy from whoever I want to. And a lot of times, the gas is as much as 50 to 75 cents a gallon, fluctuation between the vendor, even local vendors, whilst so. Big savings.
Yes.
All those in favor? Motion carries.
The next request would be for the Commissioners to consider the approval to purchase two fully-equipped trucks for the Special Operations Division at the Camden County Sheriff's Office. In accordance with the county's purchase and policy, we're presenting the request for the actual purchase of the vehicles with the Board's approval. The Commissioners approved $750,000 to the Sheriff's Office through the capital funding for replacement of vehicles fiscal year 2024.
These were, we're going to get, it looks like we're going to get local from Murray Ford.
Yes, sir.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second. First and second, any discussion?
What was the timeframe on these vehicles?
They're in stock.
They're in stock? Okay, just trying to make sure I heard that right.
Yes, they could be purchased Thursday with a PO.
Wow.
And that was, it's difficult to locate.
Absolutely.
Vehicles like that.
All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good morning, Chairman.
I am here this afternoon to request approval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for election services with Charlton County. They are currently without a, well, they just got a new election supervisor yesterday that started. They need a little bit of assistance. They do have a November election, and so we would like staff to work with them to get their machines up and ready for their upcoming election.
And they will reimburse us for the cost.
We'll keep track of hours of whoever goes over there, yes, sir.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Sean, this is you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Tonight, we have the consideration of a 2.5% salary adjustment for all non-public safety or first responder positions. If you recall, back on September 5th, the Board approved salary increases for all first responders in public safety, including fire rescue as well as all the divisions with the Sheriff's Office. This is to take care of everybody else. So currently budgeted, there's already a 2.5% merit increase based off of the employee's anniversary date. The employees would still be eligible for that. This would just be a straight across-the-board 2.5% salary adjustment that would take effect after the Board approves if they choose to do so. This would also exclude any of the organizations that we just administratively take care of, such as JDA or Public Defenders or District Attorney's Office. It would also exclude constitutional officers and judges as their pay is set by the state. So that is what we're asking for. The total impact across the general fund, unincorporated fund, solid waste authority fund, and the curbside fund is just over $174,000 for the remainder of this fiscal year. And with that, I ask for your consideration for approval.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? I'd like to just say that, or state that this is part of trying to keep us from getting behind like we were previously, like the timeline between our first conjury study and one before that was like 12 years, and we don't want to go that long anymore on a pay study, so. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Nancy Gonzalez, the Chief Financial Officer. My first agenda item are budget amendments for fiscal year 2023, and you have a detailed list with your packet, and the total adjustments to the fiscal year 23 budget is $3,550. We have to balance each of the departments to the legal level of control, and that would make the corrections or adjustments for fiscal year 23. So we're requesting your approval of those amendments.
Motion on this item?
Motion to approve the 2023 budget amendments.
We got a first and a second to approve the 2023 budget amendments, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. This brings us to this year's.
So the next agenda item are the budget amendments for the fiscal year 24 budget, and the salary adjustments for public safety were approved, as Sean had stated, in September, and consideration of the salary adjustments for the non-public safety staff was approved at tonight's meeting. So this salary, or this budget amendment would adjust the salaries needed for public safety for the period in September, from September 23 to the end of the fiscal year, which was $1,025,790. And this was discussed at the September meeting. We're just doing the budget amendment now. The second item is salary budget amendments needed for all the other staff, which was the $174,000. And all of those amendments are detailed in your package, and there's also a few miscellaneous adjustments, and the most significant ones are on the unincorporated tax district. All I'm doing there is there was approved budget items for purchase for the fire department in fiscal year 23, and the items had not arrived, so what we have to do is just move that budget to fiscal year 24. So that was for three tanker trucks and two pumper trucks. That was 1.7 million. And also, we're adjusting the PSA budget for what was approved in fiscal year 23, which was the scoreboard, and also a minor adjustment to their funding that they receive from the county, and that's about $3,000. So the total there was 103. The rest is for salary adjustments that were just approved and also the public safety adjustments. So we are requesting approval.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 budget amendments.
Second.
First and second to approve the 2024 budget amendments, any discussion?
Just to clarify, what was the sum of that, all those amendments?
The salary budget amendments for public safety was $1,025,790. The salary budget amendments for all other staff was $174,000. And then there was a few miscellaneous items in there as well.
No, I'd just like to state, I think there was a public comment earlier, and I'm sad he's not here to hear, but, you know, it seems like a majority of these budget amendments are for our personnel and employees and public safety professionals. And he was up here talking about free money, and I can assure you that money is not free, it's earned by all the hard-working people we have. So very fortunate and grateful to be able to do these budget amendments.
Amen.
All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, item number 10.
So the next agenda item has to do with the millage rates, and I do have a short presentation that I'd like to go through. So this first, and you do have copies of this PowerPoint in front of you as well. So this first slide is the history of the last 10 years of the net digest and the millage rate. And you could see that right around 2015, 2016, that's when the digest really bottomed out for us. It started in 2008, 2009, after the Great Recession, and it took that many years. If I had extended this out further, it would have been a 30% drop in value from 2009 through 2015, and then it just kind of remained flat for a couple of years, and it's only in the last four years that it's really started to have a lot of growth with it. And you could also see that we're able to, because of that growth, bring the millage rate down. We're going to be recommending on my agenda item that it be at the rollback rate, which is 13.139, which is about a 6.5% decrease from last year's millage rate of 14. And right now, the net digest is, that's 2 billion, so it's $2.02 billion, and that's the net digest. The next item is, just for your information, this is the fund balance history over the past 10 years, and you could see also that just when we went through the decline in the digest, the fund balance also declined, and this was the lowest point it was at in 2018, that was $1.4 million, which is even below our goals and our finance policies. So right now, I'm projecting that the June 30th, 2023, fund balance will be about $17 million. We're working on the audit now, so it's not finalized till everything's done, but it should be around that range. So we've made really good progress there. And this is just a summary of, this is for the countywide taxes, and this is the unincorporated tax district. So in the countywide area, again, the gross digest is 2.6 million, and there are $600 million in exemptions. That would be homestead, senior, military, there's different exemptions throughout the county. So our net digest, again, is about $2 billion. And if we apply that 13.139 rollback rate to it, and we do consider just a 98% collection, which is a reasonable collection, I think it's actually a great collection, we're expecting about net taxes of almost $26 million just from the millage rate. Of course, we have other revenue sources, but, and then on the unincorporated, it's the same thing, that we have a taxable digest of $269,000 with the 1.207 rollback rate, and that would net property tax collections of about $673,000. And we always talk about, you know, what is one mil worth? So the countywide taxes is almost up to $2 million is one mil, and on the unincorporated tax district, it's about $560,000. And this is just, it's an example, I want to stress that this is an example, of what the tax savings would be from last year to this year. If your home was valued at $200,000, we'd pay taxes on a 40% of that fair market value. And then if you're homesteaded, there's another deduction of $4,000. So your taxable value ends up at $76,000, applying the rollback rate to it, the tax levy would be about $998. And compared to last year, that would be, and last year is, oh, last year is here, so it would be a reduction of about $65 in taxes, just the reduction. And this is the same thing for the unincorporated tax district, but again, it's applying the millage rate of 1.207, which is the rollback rate compared to last year's 1.275, and that would be a very small decrease, but it is a decrease of about $5. And this is a summary of where we are with the budget now, and just some of the things we just talked about making adjustments on and looking at where the fund balance is and where it will be if you are to adopt at the 13.139. So it's a lot of numbers, but this is the current budget where we are right now. Right now, we do have $75,000 in fund balance use budgeted, using the 13.139, which applies to the property tax, timber vehicles, and mobile homes. We would project about $26 million in revenue. The other revenues remain the same at $16 million. The fund balance use that we already have adopted, $75,000. And in the budget amendments that you just adopted, one of the items was a increase in local option sales tax revenue, and that was an unexpected item that we received from the state of Georgia. They made a correction to their software system, which resulted in a pretty significant distribution to the county and other municipalities. So I'm adjusting the budget for that increase that we received. And then also, the fund balance that was on the budget amendments that we just looked at, and this is all talking about the general fund. I know it gets, there's a lot of different things we're talking about, but this is strictly general fund. So by applying all of that and the 13.139 mils, we still have a shortfall of $281,000. So if you were to adopt at the 13.139, it would be taking that projected fund balance from $17 million down to about $16 million. So we'd be using $1 million, and I believe that that would be bringing us down to about a 30, let me see, I know I have it here, a 36% fund balance compared to that new current budget, which is still a very healthy fund balance. And this is the same analysis on the unincorporated tax district, and again, you know, starting the year, we had the $3 million in tax revenue that I had budgeted for, but I was using, of course, the current, the 14 mils, which was the 2022, when I was doing the budget projections, but using, or I'm sorry, the 1.275 on the unincorporated. So using the 1.207 rollback rate would reduce that revenue a little bit, and the budget amendments I just made, and again, I really stressed that this was, you know, items that we ordered in fiscal year 23, that I just had to move the money over to fiscal year 24, and that also includes the public safety salary adjustments that were just approved. So when all of that is said and done, we're short a little bit, 20, almost $27,000 on the unincorporated tax district if you were to adopt at that rollback rate. So it would be taking the fund balance from 2.3 million to 335,000, but it's also worth mentioning that we do have a $600,000 reserve that we budgeted on the fire district, so it's almost a million dollars if we include that amount as well. And this is an item separate from what I've, like the adoption of the millage rate, and this is really something through the Department of Revenue and the Tax Commissioner's Office, but I wanted to pass that information on to y'all as well. It's the Homeowner Tax Relief Grant, the HTRG grant, and the state law that regulates this is OCGA 36-891. And this is in the calendar year 2023, so our taxes, the millage rate that you're going to be adopting tonight, it would apply to that, and it affects qualified homestead property owners, and they will receive an $18,000 reduction of the assessed value of their property, and this will all be detailed on their tax bill. And the $18,000 credit applies to, after all the other state and local homestead exemptions have been applied. And it does not apply to bond millage rates, and also it does not apply to tax allocation district millage rates after 2004. And the local tax official, which would be our tax commissioner, notifies the Department of Revenue of the total anticipated revenue and applies for the grant money. So the county is made whole, and the municipalities are made whole, but it's coordinated through the state, and the credit could not exceed the liability once all the other homestead exemptions and millage rollbacks have been applied. So if your tax bill ends up being $300 and the credit would have been 500, you don't get a refund, you just get, you know, up to that amount of the liability. So a detail on this can be found on the Department of Revenue's website, and I've got it here, it's dordeportgeorgia.gov, and it's Property Tax Relief Grant, and there's really good FAQs for. And there's really good FAQs for homeowners as well as the county there. And just as an example of how this would affect the taxpayer, the county, if we adopt at the 13.139, it would be a savings of 236 of countywide taxes. Applying it to the schools' millage rate, it would be a savings of 274. And if you're in the unincorporated tax district, fire district, it would be a savings of 21. So that would all apply to your tax bill, each one of those. So that would be a total of 532 in this particular example. The cities, this does also apply to the cities, but I did not include their figures here because we don't, we don't adopt their rate. So I just wanted to do what affected us. So it's, it's a really great program, and it is for just 2023. So just in summary, and I'll go through the agenda item, but what we're presenting is the general fund millage rate, which is the countywide taxes of 13.139, a 6.15 reduction from last year. Unincorporated, 1.207, which is a 5% reduction from last year, which was 1.275. And 1.361 mills for the incorporated Woodbine Fire District millage rate, and that's no change from last year. So are there any questions before I move on to the agenda items?
I don't have it.
I don't have any. Fantastic news.
So agenda item nine is the approval to set the annual 2023 millage rates for your consideration.
Item number 10.
Is it number 10? Oh, I'm sorry. I might be off one on mine. So item number 10. So again, the general fund millage rate for the countywide rate is requested to be adopted at the rollback rate of 13.139, or 6.15% reduction from the 2022 millage rate of 14 mills. The unincorporated millage is requested to be adopted at the rollback rate of 1.207 mills or 5.33% under the 2022 millage rate of 1.275. And the incorporated Woodbine Fire District would stay at 1.361. The digest has been properly advertised per state requirements, and attached to your packages is the millage rate resolution and the required five-year comparison ad. So we are requesting approval.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
This is a, got a motion to approve the millage rates, the first and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Motion carries.
So the next agenda item is the approval to set the annual 2023 millage rate for the Camden County Board of Education. The 2022 millage rate was 15.25 mills. The state required rollback was calculated at 14.312. And the state of Georgia requires the Board of Commissioners to adopt the school board's millage rate as set at the school board's meeting. Their digest has been properly advertised per state requirements. You have the resolutions in your package, and the Camden County Board of Education adopted a 2023 millage rate of 15.25, so they kept it the same at its September 28th, 2023 meeting, but the, it's requesting that you approve that rate as well.
What was wrong, they didn't want to go to the full rollback too?
Pardon?
They didn't want to go back to the rollback either?
No, they did not.
Is that shocking?
We have no control over what they do, we just, just basically have to rubber stamp it, so. Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve, Chairman.
Well, we've got first and second to approve the school board's millage rate. All those in favor? Those opposed? All right, next item next.
Okay, and the next item is really a formality, it's just a certification of the 2023 millage rates that were just adopted. So there is a Georgia PT 35 form, which is the county millage rate certification per year 2023, and it lists all of the items that we just adopted. And it would be for your signature and the board's approval.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second. The first and second, approve this certification of the annual millage rates. All in favor?
Motion carries.
And Commissioners, just before we move on to the next item, and Nancy, thank you for a wonderful presentation too, but I think that, you know, statewide, that homestead tax relief grant, it's, it's almost a billion dollars, it's like 950 million dollars statewide. So obviously, that's a big impact to the state's budget, but I think the state's doing pretty well right now. They've got a, the largest surplus they've ever had, so it's, it's pretty good for them as well.
Yeah, maybe we should put that information on our website.
Yes, sir, we can, we can even share the information to, directly back to the state on that FAQ about the homestead tax relief grant. It'll be a huge benefit for those that are homesteaded. And if you're not homesteaded, and you're watching, or you're in here listening, I would highly encourage you to get homesteaded, because it will absolutely save you a lot of money long term. The county has a countywide homestead property tax freeze, which is very complicated, I'm not going to get too, too deep into that right now, but it definitely helps you out long term. As you, as property values increase over years, your, your property is frozen at a specific timeframe when you apply for homestead, so it's definitely a huge benefit. I think, unfortunately for the county, I say unfortunately, but I mean, it, it's just a, you know, thing that we have to deal with, but I think over the course of the years that we've had, and I believe we've had it since 2006 or 2007, I think we've lost about close to 20 million dollars of actual, real property tax revenue. But I think we've been able to manage very well. You know, I think a lot of that was shown tonight with how strong our fund balance is, and, you know, zero, general fund debt, zero retirement debt, and, you know, I think we're doing pretty well, so.
Question on the homestead exemption, are the cities eligible to elect to offer homestead?
They, they can do.
I think they don't, but.
Yeah, I think they can do by, they have to go to a referendum.
Okay.
In order to be able to do it, same for us, we would have to do the same as well, same for the school board.
Okay.
The biggest thing that's over our head right now is, is the insurance liability. I kind of would, would have wanted to push the, to go further than the rollback, but that's a big cloud over our head. We don't, we gotta have a good fund balance because of our insurance situation. All right, anybody got anything else? All right, we'll move on to item number 13. Cass, you got something for us?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm requesting the approval for our annual progress report for the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. This is a part of our joint program of public information, which has a requirement for us to do an annual progress report every year for our continuation in the community rating
Anybody got any questions for us? Or let's get a motion in a second, anyone?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Got a first and a second to approve this, any discussion? Seeing none, can I get a motion in favor?
How about voting?
Our vote in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to reports.
I would just like to remind everyone that county offices are closed on Monday, October 9th, in observance of Columbus Day, and that's all I have.
County administrator comments?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have just a few. First off, just really want to thank the board for all the hard work and consideration that you've given over the last month and a half, mainly, you know, for the pay, we really appreciate that, I know our public safety and all of our staff, they really appreciate that. I think that, you know, it instills to them the confidence that you have in their ability to do their job. I know they work day in and day out tirelessly sometimes, even in the late, late night hours when nobody's awake, so we're just very thankful that you were able to consider that. And we're very thankful that we have such a strong fund balance, as well as just our budget overall, and with our strategic plan and where we're headed, I think, you know, we're, we're in a very, very good overall condition regarding our budget, so very appreciative of that. Also, those that may be listening or maybe in the north end, we put out a social media post about a week ago, we got a letter from GDOT concerning the bridges on the north end. Very thankful for GDOT, just considering our request, they have pulled the projects from their letting at, at the end of this year, so that was a huge milestone for us. I will say, I, I think there's been some concerns about whether or not the bridges are, are capable of withstanding the traffic. They are, GDOT would have never pulled it off of the let, list if they were not, so I just kind of want to clarify that. But we're still working with GDOT, still working with our local and state and even federal delegations. We had Senator Warnock's, one of his representatives here a week ago, actually to this day. I know Commissioner Brant, we got to ride the house, the road that your house is on, and the chairman, I know the sheriff, the school superintendent, mayor of Woodbine, city administrator of Woodbine, representative from fire rescue office, it was a pretty eventful trip. If anybody remembers last Tuesday, it was raining significantly, so I think that Senator Warnock's office definitely got to really and truthfully see what our concerns are in the worst of conditions, so it was, it was a very good trip. Thankfully, we did not get stuck, so we're very, very fortunate of that. Also, there is a FEMA nationwide, FEMA and FCC, they are planning to do a nationwide emergency alert test tomorrow at 2:20. So if you get random text, or a loud text, or alarm on your phone, that's what this is, it's a, it's a nationwide emergency, it'll, it'll go to all TVs, radios, and cellphones. So it's a pretty significant test that the nation is conducting, but other than that, that's the only updates that I have, so thank you for your consideration.
Well, this brings us to the final public comments section of the night, we'll limit you to three minutes, anybody registered?
Yes, I have a few. First, Ms. Emma Gibbs.
My name is Emma Gibbs, and I live in Colesboro on Billyville Road. And I'm here to talk about the water in the ditch in front of me. The way they kind of got it set up, I live out on the curve just before you get to Billyville Cut Off. All the water come down Billyville Cut Off on the other side of the highway, and they have a ditch for it to come on my side. But the ditch is not deep enough to accommodate all that water. The only way we can go is up Billyville Road, they can't go towards 17. The other day, we have more than one time, and it ran a lot, the ditch fills up, and all the water come in my yard. I have the red water to my doorstep. So I'm asking someone to dig that ditch, dig deeper, so the water can go all the way out, because I seen up there by Ray Ma, they have a wide ditch for all the water to go out in the swamp back there. So if I can get that ditch dug out deeper, the water going out, other than that, it fills up and come in my yard.
What can the Public Works look at?
Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am, what was, what was your address, real quick?
What do you have?
You have it, Katie, okay, thank you, never mind. She, she's got it, thank you.
Wanted to do your address.
Oh, one part of Billyville Road, I'm right there on that curve.
Anybody else can?
My name is Michael Ralph. I have a few things, a couple of statements. One is, first off, everybody I have met in this county, I've been here for four months, all of everybody's been super, super nice, talked to me like a human being, actually like I meant something. So thank you all, all the departments, thank you for that. The, the one concern that I have is I live on Confederate, the end of Confederate Point, and a lot of people are familiar with that. I, first off, will say I don't want the road improved, moved, blah, 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 if, if it comes down to anything, I'd like to, you know, on public record. One thing that does need to be addressed is that concerns me the most, is since there is no easement for the drainage at the end of Confederate. I am having issues, and I need to, to get that drainage. Someone needs to deal or talk with me about the drainage, because it's pretty much ending at my house before it goes out to the bluff. And it's, it's, it's starting to become a mess, and there's other things going on in the neighborhood, and I understand all that, but I do need that, we, someone needs to discuss the, where that water is going to flow, other than on my property. Because I do get all of Confederate Point supposed to go all the way to the point, and it's kind of ending up on my property about an acre or two prior to getting into the, into the bluff. So I do need to get that addressed. And kudos on the bridge. And I'm, I guess that, I just wanted to thank you all, and just voice my concern about the road and the ditch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi, I moved here two months ago from Savannah, Georgia. Three days after moving into my house, I had a stray dog try and come inside my house. I've since called animal control six times on six different occasions about stray dogs. I keep getting told that it's going to get dealt with. Last week, I had to shoot and kill stray dogs in my front yard that were trying to attack me. And they did successfully kill one of my animals. The same two stray dogs were observed killing multiple other animals in the neighborhood within that hour. I keep getting told it's going to get dealt with. My fear is the next time that this happens, it's going to be a small child or an elderly It getting dealt with doesn't seem to be getting dealt with. Between the Humane Society and Animal Control, they keep pointing fingers at one another, saying that their hands are tied. I don't want to have to carry a gun to my car for fear of getting attacked by more stray dogs, because right now, I have a fear of leaving my house unless someone is with me, because I can't watch my back, more should I have to try and watch my back, leaving my house, going to my car. I'm a mental health therapist, I know how to work with trauma, I've worked in corrections for six years in Chatham County, I've seen trauma and I've dealt with it. This event changed my entire life. The cat that was killed, I'd had for a quarter of my life. And I grew up in a military family, shooting guns and, and shooting game. I have a pit bull inside my house that I love dearly, he's training to be a therapy dog. But I never thought the day would come that I would have to shoot and kill two dogs in my front yard and ask St. Mary's police officer to help me pick up shell casings, and like the city administrator mentioned, the pouring rain, asked me to track with me, the lieutenant, blood trail into the woods to find the second dog that I shot before the bottom drops out, so I could ensure that the second dog was killed, so a small child or elderly person wasn't attacked if this dog didn't die in the woods. What's going to happen? This isn't, I moved here two months ago and I'm ready to sell again, like this, it's the most unsafe, and I've lived in big metropolitan areas, we're getting mugged and all that fun stuff is a day-to-day thing. I moved to a small town for peace of mind, and I haven't slept well. I don't want my family to come over with my nieces and my nephews for fear of this happening and having to tell them that they're going to have to bring guns in case something were to happen, like this isn't, what's going to happen?
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wish to speak?
That's all I have registered.
Seeing none, can I get a motion for adjournment? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?